And I'm wearing a black sweater.
I know. I wear a white one.
Thirty second warning. Evening, everyone. I want to call to order this meeting of the Syracuse City Council in our business meeting for June. I need to begin with a shout out to my wife, whose birthday it is today.
Happy birthday, girl.
And also call for a motion to adopt the agenda as outlined.
So moved.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll begin tonight with a pledge of allegiance and a prayer. Brett, could I ask you to say the prayer tonight? And Julie, would you lead us in the pledge?
To the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation, united in a visible liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in heaven, it's with gratitude that we gather tonight to do the business of this good city. Grateful for the citizens that we have and for the leadership that's involved and for everybody who worked so hard to make this a better place. We recognize the blessings that we have for living here. Ask thee to please be with us tonight. Please provide us with wisdom, provide us with discernment. We can have direction in doing the things that will best serve those around us. Ask these things in the name of Jesus Christ.
Amen. Thank you very much. The first item on our agenda is public comment. This is your chance to share with us something that you hope that we bring up in another meeting or something that you would like us to be aware of on one of the items we're discussing later tonight. We do have four public hearings on the agenda tonight. That will be another chance to talk about those specific events only. Does anyone have a comment tonight? Please state your name and address.
My name's Keith Lindstrom, address seven ninety-one North One Hundred East in Lehigh. And I'm with Leisure Villas. So back in September twenty nineteen, the city adopted a new general plan where they outlined where they wanted to have commercial, residential, industrial, and different things like that. So that's where the city had a chance to plan how they want their city to look. And it was approved. And that's what we go off for the general plan right now. Item twelve tonight is a rezon request that we have submitted to the city. This property is located on Antelope Drive. It was designated in the general plan to be commercial. Because of this general plan, we are limited to only being able to do commercial on this piece of property. We can't rezon it to make a better use of residential because it's certainly A1. And that's not the best use right along Antelope Drive, which I'm sure all of you agree with. And so we have to rezon it and we want to comply with the general plan. The general plan does give us some vesting inherited rights because it requires us to do a rezon to commercial, which is what we're requiring. If we want to do anything else, like I said, we have to go in for a general plan change, which is unlikely to happen on Antelope Drive since that is designated for commercial and that is the best use for that property. Our intent with the property is to have day use. Businesses go in there. We're not looking to do, you know, things that stay open late at night. It's mainly, you know, you're probably eight to five, eight to six type businesses that come in there and do business there. We're looking to do kind of a low key stuff, so it's not going to be, you know, high use, high traffic. It's more of your uses that will be during the middle of the day. And that's our intent with that. We have met all the requirements per code, per the application. And at Planning Commission, they did send us forward with a positive recommendation to approve our application because they do understand that we do meet all the requirements to be rezoned to commercial. And we do comply with the general plan by asking for a re-commercial or for a commercial zone. So I just asked tonight when you guys discussed and vote on our item number twelve that you take into consideration that we are just trying to comply with the general plan and do what the city has asked that area to be done. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Seeing none, I will close public comment. The monitor has died. We're going to go on with the meeting, but that is a useful tool. The next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. We have minutes from May fourteenth and May twenty-eighth. Are there any amendments to those? If not, I'll take a motion.
I motion we approve the minutes from May fourteenth and May twenty-eighth.
I'll second. And they were very well done, read through them all and although someone says we don't read them. But no, you did a great job, Cassie.
Okay, motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Item number four is items of general consent. These are items that we've talked about in previous meetings and have come to an agreement. And it seemed to be fully agreed upon. Now we can remove them if someone wanted to rediscuss the items. But tonight's items of general consent are proposed resolution R twenty-four dash twenty-six approving and authorizing the execution of the interlocal cooperation agreement with Davis County Sheriff's Office for dispatch. Thank you, Taylor.
Yes, sir.
Item B would be proposed resolution R twenty-four dash twenty rescinding resolution R eleven dash twenty-three, which allows for advertising in the city utility bill. And item C, authorizing executive execution of an agreement with Weber Basin Conservancy District for transparent water billing services. Are there any of those items anyone has an issue with? If not, I'll take a motion to accept the items of consent.
Mr. Mayor, I propose that we accept the resolutions as outlined in the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number five is our first public hearing. This is consideration of non-monetary support for Dream Events LLC organization and administration of the farmers market in Syracuse during the summer and fall of two thousand and twenty-four. And approval of an agreement regarding the same. This is an item where we have sought out some help to produce a farmers market. We have a independent company who has made application to do this. We would be making city space available and assisting with advertising, I believe, but we are not contributing monetary support.
Why does it require a public hearing if there's no?
Because it is something we're giving
Okay.
in lieu of money. Anything in kind counts as money.
They did send a layout, a map layout like we requested and it was too late to put into.
So.
Oh, it wasn't there? Oh, okay. Yeah, I got it yesterday.
First, let me bring to forward the public hearing. Is there anyone from the public that would like to talk about this proposed agreement? Seeing none, I will close public hearing. Counsel, any more further discussion you'd like to have on this before we take a vote?
Nope.
Seeing none, I'll take a motion.
Sort of.
Anyone?
Yeah, sorry, sorry, sorry. I move that we approve the consideration of non-monetary support for Dream Events LLC organization administration of a farmers market in Syracuse City during the summer and fall of two thousand and twenty-four.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
No, that was an actual.
Item number six is also a public hearing. This is proposed ordinance twenty-two-four dash fourteen approving fiscal year twenty-two-five compensation increases of executive municipality offers or municipal officers. This is again is a new state requirement that we hold a separate item to discuss wages for executives. So I will bring this forward. Is there anyone, or first I'll open public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to comment on this item? Seeing none, I will close public hearing. Counsel, is there any further discussion you'd like to have on this item? If not, I'll take a motion.
Well, there's no benchmark adjustment at all. Is that right?
There is.
So this is the one where we capped it for this year.
There's a cap.
So we did an eight percent cap.
I don't believe in the cap.
Okay. Well, I'll take a motion if somebody'd like to make it.
Mr. Mayor, I propose that we execute proposed ordinance twenty-two-four approving fiscal fiscal year twenty-five compensation increases for executive municipal officers.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
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 Okay, this motion fails. Next item is number seven, proposed hearing as well. Proposed resolution R twenty-four dash twenty-one. Yeah, I understand. We have to go back and deal with that, but.
Okay, yeah.
Would you prefer we did it right at this time, I guess?
You can, yeah, yeah. In order for us to to actually make those changes.
In short, I understand you're voting down the proposed ordinance, but it needs an ordinance of some kind that is substituted in its place. So we can't actually enact the budget without some kind of agreement on where we will announce. Again, this this can always be modified, but we have to announce to the public the intention to go forward. So can I get an alternate motion? Which could have been the original motion if you want to motion something different.
I guess why don't you like it? Can we start there?
It's not, I, this is exactly why we feel like this needs to be done is because we're getting a new fire department and we want to keep the taxes lower on the citizens, but it's not these individuals' responsibility that the city's grown to such a size that we require a new fire department and we're putting it on them to make it their responsibility in a way for us to fund it. And it's not, I don't feel like it's right.
Okay.
So you would advocate for no cap at all?
I would, I, exactly.
Understand.
Well, I would advocate that we reduce the cap.
So you would actually, but when you say reduce, you'd actually, but they're saying pay more, you're saying pay less.
Pay less.
Okay.
And I'm not saying pay more. I'm saying pay a rate that's consistent with what.
What we have on, yeah.
Right.
There's a reason that there's a benchmark process that's being done. Otherwise, why even have the benchmark?
I agree with that.
I mean, we're looking at a situation where we have city employees who in some cases are working under market and to cap this, we're going to run into a problem within a year or two or three when somebody else comes in or somebody retires and we're going to get hit at that point. So why not just deal with this for what it is now, is my opinion.
Okay.
Okay, so we have two for just paying the market rate.
We have two that voted for the current proposed rate and one that supports a lower rate. We need three people to agree on one plan or we can't go forward.
I will, I will agree on the eight percent cap.
Okay.
Feel like we need to look at this, though.
Okay. So can, well, let's see. To recall the motion, I need somebody, okay, so here are the options. Understanding, and I am just directing traffic here, folks. This is, I'm not trying to tell you what to do. I would either need a motion supported by three council members for what I'm hearing from council is to go forward with no cap and the original benchmark agreements. Or I would need one of the people who voted nay to recall the motion in order to change their vote. That you cannot have somebody who voted in the failing motion recall an item that for reconsideration.
So Julie, am I hearing that you're switching to a yea?
I will recall the motion.
Okay. The motion has been recalled and the motion was, the original motion was ordinance twenty-two-four dash fourteen approving the fiscal year compensation, which included the eight percent cap on executive officers.
So Mayor, it feels tedious, but we do actually need a motion to reconsider. And that has to be seconded and then that would have to pass before you can take a new.
Fair enough.
Motion to reconsider.
You can't.
Oh, I can't?
Come from Julie.
Sorry.
Anyone can second, right? Because we're still split. Okay, so motion to reconsider made. Do I have a second to reconsider the motion?
Second.
Second. Motion, all in favor to reconsider the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so the, we are reconsidering the motion. The original motion was, as I explained, the outline in the packet. All in favor of the original motion?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion passes. We can now go forward on what we will advertise for the future budget. Item number seven. Okay, I had just marked that we were going to come back to that because it failed and we had to have something. So I appreciate you bringing it to my attention. I was with you, just not in the same schedule. All right, item number seven is a public hearing, proposed resolution R twenty-four dash twenty-one adopting the tentative budget of an operating budget for the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. And continuing the public hearing to August thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four to consider increasing the certified property rate and adopt a fiscal budget. So to be clear to everyone, what we are voting on tonight is a tentative budget. The tentative budget is only, I mean, we could make it official if there was no tax increase. Where there is, we have an advertising responsibility that we have to give give time with what we are advertising, which takes us to August, which means this will not be an official budget. It will be an operating budget until such time as we can have this public truth and taxation hearing in August. Okay, that was a lot, but I hope the explanation helps anyone who was completely unclear what we're about to do. So just, let's start with a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to discuss the proposed tentative budget for year fiscal year twenty-two-four dash twenty-five, starting July one? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Now, counsel, this is your opportunity to discuss any changes you would like to make or adopt what a current tentative budget. And what we adopt tonight, we cannot go above that amount for the rest of the year. This is, this is a limit. We can always reduce it in August. We cannot go above this because it requires public notification and that's what we're about to set the limit tonight. Who'd like to start?
I, I would just like to point out, one of the things on the budget that we had taken off is, and this is just an example, is the updates to the police department. Now, originally, those updates would have cost around eighty thousand dollars if we would have done them when we got the estimate, looking into it in the first place about two, three years ago. Now those updates are well over two hundred thousand dollars. So it's about two-ten, two-twelve. So by continuously pushing it off, we're just effectively costing the taxpayers more.
Okay. Anyone else like to comment on the budget or pose any other alterations?
I would like to propose one alteration. I keep going back and forth on this. I think I would like to propose that we add the police lieutenant back in. That would be, I checked with Steve earlier today. What that would do is would go to a twenty-point-eight percent from the seventeen-point-one we currently had. So I would like to recommend we add that position back in.
I would like to add the part-time position for the other, the new building also.
Let's take them one at a time. Okay, so do I have, and this is not the official vote, but in order to move forward, we kind of have to assess as we go. Do I have sufficient support to add the police lieutenant back in by raise of hand?
I, I just want to make the comment that that increase in percentage in seventeen or Jordan, whatever you said. What was it seventeen to?
Twenty-point-eight.
Seventeen-point-one to twenty-point-eight.
And that amounts to a five dollar increase or something like that per household? Is that accurate?
I don't have that number.
Okay. All right, so let me, let me start there. It looks like we have sufficient support to add that back into the budget. Now, Jennifer, you wanted to make another.
The, I feel like it's very pointless to have a building with nobody sitting behind a desk for people to talk to. So the part-time position for the Parks and Rec maintenance building, I feel like we need to have somebody in there at least part-time.
All right. So again, we're going to do it the same way by raise of hand. How much, do we have sufficient support to add that back into the budget? Okay, that one would fail. We only have two supporters. Any other amendments you'd like to propose before we go to the budget vote? Okay, so I will need a motion. And again, this is our chance to talk about it. So second call, no others? Okay. So I would need a motion to accept resolution twenty-two-four dash twenty-one adding in the added position of an additional police lieutenant. That would be how the motion would have to read in order to reflect what we've done so far.
Mayor, I move that we approve proposed resolution R twenty-four dash twenty-one adopting the tentative budget as an operating budget for the fiscal year twenty-two-four, twenty-five with the addition of an additional police lieutenant.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, that motion passes three to two. So we have a tentative operating budget that will begin July one. The next item is also a public hearing. Proposed resolution R twenty-four dash twenty-two updating and amending the Syracuse City Consolidated Fee Schedule, making adjustments throughout. Now, let me start by saying that this adjust, proposed adjustments, these would be the fees that are paid throughout for different purposes and there are many and many that no one ever sees because they would be very specific to specific uses or opportunities. But I will open this up to public if anyone has any comment on the public fee schedule. We're open for public hearing. Seeing none, I will close public hearing. Counsel, this would be your chance to comment or make adjustments on the proposed changes to the fee schedule. Now, keep in mind that on fee schedules, it is necessary for us from time to time to change these mid-year. So this is not set like the budget is set. And I just want to be clear with the, the public that that could change as need provides. Discussion.
We need a public hearing?
I just did that.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
It's okay. I'm here all night.
You're here all night. Uh, no comments.
Okay, then I would need a motion if there's no further discussion on resolution R twenty-four dash twenty-two.
I move that we approve proposed resolution R twenty-four, twenty-two, updating and amending the city, city consolidated fee schedule.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Here's that motion passes unanimously. Item number nine is resolution R twenty-four dash twenty-three updating the or adopting and updating wage scale for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five. Okay. I'm going to call for clarity here. Steve is out. Brody, can you, for our citizens' sake, clarify how this is different than the motion that we made that was just on the executives? Is that the only difference?
Yeah, so this is the wage scale for all positions in the city based on the benchmark that was so three departments went through a benchmark process this year, police, fire, parks and recreation. So if there are adjustments, you'll, you'll see those in red on the document.
So for public reference, we have our own policy which measures the eight closest, most like us cities or what they pay the similar position. And then we pay based on that. It is not at the top end, but it is at a percentage of those so that we are relative to the market that we are in. That's where we get the number. And then counsel, do you have any further discussion on this topic? Seeing none, I guess we're ready for a motion.
Mayor, I propose we accept resolution R twenty-four dash twenty-three, updating wage scale for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Item number ten. Proposed resolution R twenty-four dash twenty-four, authorizing and directing the participation rates of Syracuse City in the public employees retirement system and the public safety retirement system for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. Again, this is something that is somewhat mandated by the state as participation in the retirement system. There is an optional part of this that has been discussed at great length in multiple work sessions. So I'm not going to rehash that, but I just want, again, the citizens to know from where we get this information. Are there any discussions on this? Seeing none, I will take a motion on this resolution.
I move we approve proposed resolution R twenty-four, twenty-four, authorizing and directing the participation rates of Syracuse City in the public employees retirement system and the public safety retirement system for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion also passes unanimously. Okay, I'm going to take a really quick break and say I hope for anyone who had questions that you appreciate the, or the description of where we were, but that takes care of our budgeting items for tonight and I'd like to just take a breath. Okay. Item number eleven is authorize the surplus of two nineteen ninety-nine bobtail trucks formerly used by Public Works as snow plows. Again, you can see that these are very old pieces of equipment. It's tough to even get parts for these anymore. So we have talked about this in a previous meeting. Any further discussion about the possibility of surplusing these older trucks?
I saw that the, are we, are the plows going with the truck? So that they're not salvageable? Or they?
We have already replaced the plows and the trucks both. So these are older plows. They're still in decent enough shape that they could be surplus and we could get a salvage out of it, a pretty good salvage out of them.
Okay, they have no, they have no use to us anymore.
Right.
Limited use.
One of the truck, we'll, we're still proposing the surplus bolt, but one of the trucks, our Parks Department would like to use for a little while for their own needs for hauling things like the, the pumpkins and the pumpkin walk in the back of the truck and haul it up and so, or dirt or grass, whatever they've got, so.
Okay, so would we actually be surplusing that then if we're keeping it?
So we could still put it on surplus and then once they're done with it, it's already surplus and they can, they can.
Keep it?
Get rid of it however they need.
Like, do they need it?
Actually surplusing it if we can still get use out of it.
For our purpose, it's, it's been replaced.
No, we mean for their purpose.
Yeah, but for city's purpose.
Yeah.
Yeah, like can our use it?
Go out of the city. And it seems like we're keeping one. So are we just surplusing one of these vehicles?
Yeah, Mayor, you, you're right. If, if, if we surplus this, the intention is to surplus it.
Yeah.
If we're going to keep one, then don't surplus it.
Equipment in other departments. That's wonderful if it's.
Yeah. Yeah, if they can use it.
Still got value. In fact, if they still both had value, we'd keep them.
But it seemed like you, in the packet, you'd said they were undergoing a lot of repairs of, of late. And so I guess, tell us what you want.
Or could they last another year? Could they get use out of them?
Yeah, I mean, we've done some transmission. Yeah, I mean, we've done some transmission replacements and, and, um.
Because if they're costing the city a lot of money, then I'm fine.
They are expensive for repair, but, but they are in, and they are in good enough condition that they could still be used, I don't know, you know, how much longer, but.
I feel like at this time, and sorry to put you on the spot, but Preston, could you come up to the other mic? And if we're going to send one to your department, I'd like your input on the value you get out of this versus the value that we might get by surplusing it and recovering funds.
Is it a helper or a headache?
No, we've actually asked Robert if we could use it. Um, we do use it every year for pumpkin walk and for other, we actually have our staff getting CDLs so that we could use it, so we've asked him to, please let us keep it.
Oh, good.
Would it be better to have a second one?
No, we just, we just need one, we don't want.
Okay.
Just wanna be clear what we're up against here.
I think it's not a very frequent use, but it's something that could be.
Need it, we do ask every, a couple time of the year.
So pumpkin walk and snowplow, we don't go hand in hand, is there, could we use one of the other bobtails and get the value from surplusing both of these at this time?
Oh, I don't know how much, I don't know.
Possible, yeah.
Yeah, it is, I don't, I don't know what the value of it is, how much you're gonna get out of it.
I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know what, I know that we couldn't, I know that it's very expensive to get something new.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, I definitely know it's, it's.
Mayor. Want to be clear that we're saving the.
I feel like the reduce, reuse, recycle kind of steps in here, and I feel like if she wants to keep it, we should let her, their department keep it.
It's definitely big, it's, we do not have anything like it in our fleet.
And you got a whole new building area to put it in.
Yeah, we definitely don't have anything in our fleet.
Okay.
So it would definitely be useful in our fleet to have it.
Useful more than this one time?
Oh, yes, yeah.
All right, that's good.
Mayor?
Yes.
So we should be clear that it's essentially an acquisition of a vehicle by Park and Rec.
Yeah.
Which would, which could then be considered part of the rotation of replacement when that vehicle is, is through, and, um, so they would be adding to their fleet an additional vehicle.
Okay.
Um, and so if by doing that, we're essentially, we could be saying unless we make it clear tonight that this is a one-time loner, and then it will be surplus, and then they'll have to propose, uh, if they want a truck like that, they would have to propose it in a future budget, uh, to get it approved by council. Um, because it, this is, um, this is a, a way, if we do it this way without making that clear, we're unknowingly increasing the fleet of a department.
Yeah, I, I hear you and I follow your logic, I appreciate you pointing that out. I am concerned though that, um, the city doesn't transfer funds when they transfer uses. Like several years ago, we kept a dump truck that went from, um, from Public Works to Parks and.
No, it stayed in Public Works.
Oh, it stayed in.
Yeah, it was just from, it was from our, uh, Streets Division to the Environmental Division.
Yeah, but see internally, we change money, so I don't feel like that's a surplus.
Well, I, I just know, the one, the only concern I have is it says these trucks require a lot of maintenance and have aged out, so.
Second.
For maintenance for what he uses it for, they're gonna be using it very few and frequent.
Really big pickup truck.
It's, I've, I don't know, the farmer in me is reduce, reuse, recycle, if we can keep it and use it, we should keep it and use it.
Okay, so I want to separate the issues first. If we keep the vehicle, then it does not need to be surplus. So if we are in favor of, of continuing use in a different department, then we would reduce the surplusing to one. Because I don't feel like it's right to surplus a vehicle years ahead of getting rid of it. Because then you're not really saying it's state now. If we're saying it's not usable, it doesn't have a purpose to the city, then yeah, we should get rid of it because it's more of a burden than a use, but I think, so I'm gonna ask the, this intermediate question, are we okay keeping this vehicle and reusing it in another department?
Yes, but I do think it, we should stipulate that this is, uh, I don't want to add it into the vehicle rotation. This would be use it, and then we'd after, if it wears out and breaks, um, we would need to reevaluate the Parks vehicles at that time.
Okay.
Give them another handout from Public Works.
Okay.
In the life cycle.
Which, which would happen, we could be replacing.
End me down.
All right, so do I have agreement that we're going to continue to keep the one vehicle and reuse it in another department? I, I'm needing either head nod or I'll have to call for a raise.
Hand raise or?
Okay, yeah, we, all right, I got sufficient head, head nod.
I'm good with it.
Okay, so now we're talking about surplusing one nineteen ninety-nine, uh, bobtail truck. Any discussion on that? This would be the lesser capable.
Anybody else need one?
Best guesses we can determine. Okay, so I would need a motion to surplus one truck.
I moved.
Second.
And do I need to include in that motion that this is not adding to the fleet, it's just until it wears out, or is that a separate item?
I think that would help.
Okay.
Uh, just for the record, so if we need to go back and look later.
So can I ask you to make that part of your motion, that this is just until it wears out?
So moved.
Okay.
It's a one-time thing, and next time we need a hand me down, second.
All right, I think we've got abundant, abundant clarity.
Okay.
I move that we surplus one of these vehicles, allowing Parks and Rec to use the other, and this will be, uh, use until you break it.
Second.
Not adding to the fleet.
Okay, moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
That's why we have a good attorney.
Motion passes unanimously. Um, item number twelve, proposed ordinance twenty-four dash ten, amending the Syracuse City zoning map uh, for property located approximately twenty-two fifty west Antelope Drive from R two with this town center overlay and A one with a town center overlay to general commercial with a town center overlay. Okay, again, this has been talked about, uh, quite a bit, so any further discussion? I think we know which one this is. Any further discussion? Okay, then I'll take a motion. Okay.
What, do we want to go on this?
I can't make.
The one where they, we asked for more information, he did tell us more, but there was nothing specific to it. And there's nothing on paper to it, and there's, there's nothing more to it.
So I would, I would just point out, uh, to the public and council that, uh, at any point in time, regardless of the general plan or general map, at any point in time, this council has the prerogative to say it's not the right time to rezone a property. So if that's, if there's some sensitivity to that, that is your right. You also have the right to rezone a property, uh, as gone through the process that we have. So, but I do need from one of you the motion.
I move that we deny proposed ordinance twenty-four dash ten, amending the Syracuse City zoning map for property located approximately twenty-two fifty west Antelope Drive. Now is not the right time for the city to do that.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, that, uh, passes four to one. Uh, item thirteen, administrate, authorized administration to award contract for fire station number thirty-two road improvement projects to Craythorn as suggested. Uh, okay. Um, do we need discussion on this? I, I think the information was pretty clear in the packet.
Um, I would like to, I talked to this Robert earlier, and if you want to outline some of those items we discussed, that would probably help the council.
Okay, uh, recognize, Robert, is there any particulars you'd like to point out here that were concerns or considerations?
This, um, this is the bluff road in front of the new fire station. It would primarily be widening the road, piping storm drain, that ditch along the front of the fire station along bluff road. Uh, we have the budget laid out here and, um, three bids, Craythorn's lowest bid. Do you have a specific question?
I, I moved on to the next one already, so, no, I'm good with this one.
Okay.
Apologies.
Thank you for misleading us, uh.
No, I, I thought his, your explanation was very good.
You did bring up one question, and that is that this is not just road improvement, so I want to be clear there. This is also some utility and infrastructure improvements that will take place underneath the road that are a part of this contract. Okay.
So I know that some, sometimes the question comes up is why is Craythorn so much under everybody else, but they're literally right here. And so they have everything right in, in the area, so it makes it cheaper for them to do it. And they really are a great company to work with, I don't know if any of you had the opportunity to work with them, but they are awesome. They're like going up there on my top three list of construction companies to work with, so I like when they bid for us.
Um, one thing that we should probably get some clarity on is this is, uh, the final bid is seventy-seven K over the budget amount, if I'm not, if I'm reading that right.
Yeah, that's right, uh, most of that's from the storm drain costs to pipe that ditch. Um, one way we can, uh, remedy this is just, uh, delaying that four thousand, it'd probably be delaying the four thousand west storm drain piping project that we had on the schedule, we'll just delay it a year, and then it'll work.
Okay, I hope you have a plan. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I did have a motion, but it, do I, I still need a second.
Second.
You have a motion?
Who motioned? That was the last one, boss.
All right, sorry, my mistake.
You need to slow down and you gotta catch it.
My mistake.
Get it together, fellows.
I move that we authorize administration to award contract for fire station number thirty-two road improvement project to Craythorn, Inc.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item fourteen, authorized administration to award contract for secondary metering project number one to P and L Construction. Uh, anything we need to be briefed on this, uh, from the bid opening or particulars?
Yeah, let me just mention on this one, we do have city employees that are hired specifically to do this work. In our grant application, we did put in there, uh, contingency to allow the city to bid out uh, about a thousand of these meter conversions through our, uh, projects. Uh, many of them could be through our capital projects, if a contractor's already in a neighborhood working on a road rehabilitation, they're doing water line, we'll just have them do that at the same time and bring everything up to code. Uh, this, this one, uh, we figured we would focus on areas where there's high traffic volumes, high traffic speeds, where contractors are a little more experienced with traffic control and, and handling those more difficult areas, so that's what this contract is doing. And so this will help our own city employee team, uh, continue through in the residential neighborhoods and not slow them down.
Well, and considering the volume that we have to do, even though the deadline is years out, um, we have no guarantee we'd reach it without assistance, so I, I have no problem with that. All right, any further discussion?
I do have a question in the difference in this estimate, though.
Okay, what's your, your question?
A million dollars?
Point two, actually.
Yeah, it is a big, big difference and, uh, with the low bid, uh, this one.
Underbidding, are we gonna, they're gonna come back and be like, it's gonna cost us way more, because that's a big difference.
This.
The others were more comparable.
Yeah, I'm not as familiar with this P and L construction company, but it, it did come with a, a high recommendation from some of our local, uh, farmer residents, um, of someone that you have used for construction contractor and, and have been very favorable with them, so, and they've done this type of work before, uh, just not in our city, so.
Feel like they're underbidding themselves.
Well, it is a, you know, it is something that happens in this world, sometimes people need to keep their, their people working more than they need to make sure they hold.
By a million dollars?
We will still be sure that they're holding to standards and, um, yeah, without doing, uh, change orders to try to make up difference. Yeah.
Uh, we don't have anything to say that there.
The other two are very comparable to each other, though, that other one is way under, and that's when one, which one's whatnot like the others?
I understand. As staff's recommendation is that we should trust this low bid as complete, right? So if it's complete, then.
All right.
So I'll take a motion.
Yeah, mayor, yeah, just, just to add some extra clarity to that, we're required to go with the lowest responsible bidder.
Yeah.
And if, if this low bidder, if we determine that they're not responsible, we have to find reasons why. And, and there, we do not have any at this time.
Okay, very good information.
That's why we ask questions, though.
Thank you for that. Can I get a motion?
I move that we authorize administration to award contract for secondary meter watering, secondary metering project number one to P and L Construction.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, thank you. Uh, item number fifteen is proposed resolution R twenty-four dash twenty-five, updating agenda C, D, and E two on the Americans with Disabilities Act Transition Plan, originally adopted via resolution twenty dash oh seven. Um, just so the public understand, we are required to make changes throughout the city that accommodate Americans with disabilities. We have been trying to do that, as Congress, uh, updates their requirements to change what meets the code and doesn't meet the code, we have to require, or we're required to change our plan to conform to that. So this is not something completely new, this is not something, as you see, this was a oh seven original resolution, so we've been working on it.
I think it was actually a twenty.
Oh, you're right, twenty, so we've been working on this for years, for four years now, and we'll just have to continue. All right. Any other discussion? Thank you for your correction.
My only thing is, while I, I'm very supportive of this, I do think some of these are a little strange, I mean, I, like, I've, I will say this is a driver in some of our taxes, just simply because I've seen the work they have to do, make razor railing an inch, on, on mine, we had, uh, on my street this week, they tore up, um, what looked like perfectly nice ADA ramp with a little yellow mat, and they have now removed that yellow mat and are gonna put in a slightly larger yellow mat.
I, I.
It's frustrating, but I also, I know it's important to keep, to be accessible, but sometimes I feel like these guys go too far.
No, I want to comment on that because I've received lots of comments in the public, actually, people saying, why did you tear up something that was perfectly functional to replace it? Well, it's federal law.
I know.
I mean, so, so.
Doesn't mean I can't complain about it.
No, 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 I'm not.
Can't complain, you know what, it's because when they change that regulation, it goes from one company's making it to another company's making it, and then what company are we buying from now?
Well, so I just want to be clear to our citizens, we are not making candid decisions to replace things that are, we are not required to replace. If the determination is made that we have to upgrade to a different standard, the options that we face as a city, because we are not the highest authority in the land, is that if we refuse to comply, they will simply withhold taxes and do it anyway. So we can either work with our own format, which is we can do it as we work on other things, which is the most cost-effective and saves you the most money, or we can let the federal government manage it because we're in non-compliance. These are not, you know, real hard options to manage, we want to do the best we can and get the most value for.
Agree.
I say that, maybe nobody is, is listening online, but in the future, I have had lots of people.
There's some people.
Okay, well, I'd love to be able to refer to this, uh, conversation when people say, why did you tear out the yellow textured section in front of a, a map because you have to replace it with another one? It is a government regulation that is beyond us. Okay.
This is why I always say questions, comments, concerns, or emotional outbursts.
Well, I, I could go on and on. I've been highly, yeah, I've, I've been highly criticized at times, saying you took something and you replaced it with something very similar, why waste tax dollars? It, it is not about.
Because the government bullies us to.
Okay, fair enough, I'm gonna leave it at that. Um, but it, it is something we have to comply with, so. I've done my ranting, anyone else before we?
We, we, we get our ranting in seventeen.
Okay, gotcha. All right, so, uh, can I get a motion?
I move that we propose, that we approve proposed resolution R twenty-four twenty-five, updating addenda C, D, and E two to the Americans with Disabilities Act ADA Transition Plan, originally adopted via. addenda C, D, and E two to the Americans with Disabilities Act ADA Transition Plan originally adopted via resolution twenty dash oh seven. Second.
Okay, moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, wonderful. That brings us to our second period of public comment, which is after our business is done. We still have other parts to our meeting this evening, but I will open it up for public comment. If someone has something they'd like us to share with us or suggestion for a future agenda you'd like us to cover. Just want to say hello. Okay.
Hi Shane.
All right, so I'm gonna close public comment. I appreciate it. Uh, now, before we go into mayor announcements, I am going to adjourn us from this meeting because we have budget, uh, items we have to take care of with other responsibilities to the city. So I'm going to temporarily declare us in recess. And I am going to call to order the special redevelopment agency meeting. Um, I need a motion to accept the agenda.
Moved. Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, item number two, which is proposed resolution RDA twenty-four dash oh one, adopting the annual budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four twenty-five as required by seventeen C dash one dash six oh one Utah Code annotated nineteen fifty-three. This would be just our RDA annual budget in a separate meeting.
Need public hearing?
Oh yeah, sorry. This is a public hearing. It's a budget. So I'll open public hearing. Anyone have any comments on our RDA? Seeing none, I will close public hearing. Can I get a motion?
I move that we approve proposed resolution RDA twenty-four dash zero one, adopting the annual budget for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five. Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes unanimously. We have a second item in our RDA meeting. This is resolution RDA twenty-four dash oh two, authorizing the preparation of a community redevelopment project area plan for the area near the intersection of three thousand west and Antelope Drive. This is not a final, uh, resolution that we will make on this subject, but we need a intent to create this so that we can begin visiting, which will happen as soon as this week, the other taxing agencies to create a CRA, um, for the purpose of, uh, helping development in that area. Any discussion?
It's gonna be a good.
In the area of?
The area of, there is a map in the packet provided that shows the area that would be included with the CRA. Can I get a motion?
I move that we approve proposed resolution RDA twenty-four zero two, authorizing the preparation of a community reinvestment project area plan
Okay.
For the area near the intersection of three thousand west and Antelope Drive.
And this is not in the motion, but I think we've tentatively decided to call this the, uh, gateway CRA to identify it as opposed to the other or CRAs that we currently have in the city.
Second, by the way.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, I will now adjourn us from this meeting. And I will call to order beating of the MBA Municipal Building Authority. Uh, just for information sake, for our many adoring fans out there, a MBA, this is our municipal building authority. This is the formation of a entity that, uh, helps us build buildings, public, uh, infrastructure. So, uh, this is the way that we bond for things like a new fire station. So, um, I will now declare us in public hearing. This would be for our budget for the next fiscal year. Is there anyone here that has comment on the budget for the MBA? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Counsel, uh, wearing your MBA hat. Does anyone have any discussion of our fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four requirements? I will take a motion then.
Mr. Mayor, I propose that we accept resolution MBA twenty-four oh one, adopting municipal budget authority, annual budget for the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four.
I think that might be.
Sorry, that's supposed to be twenty-four, twenty-five, I believe.
Yeah.
Modifying.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that mash, motion passes unanimously. Well, now reconvene our city business meeting from the recess to do our other business and we will begin with council, uh, announcements. We already did eighteen. I like to move that ahead. All right, so, um, mayor and council announcement. Jen, do you have any?
Um, the Miss Syracuse pageant is this coming Saturday. So everybody got tickets in their boxes. If you didn't go in there, it's in your box for the lunch and, uh, an invitation for lunch and, uh, Miss Syracuse pageant itself. So it's at the high school. Please join us. Our amazing law enforcement officers do this really cool thing where they walk the ladies and they have their own little personal handshakes. One of my favorite things about the pageant. It's great. Um, and the, uh, farmer's market starts Thursday. So there's been a lot, a lot, a lot of interest in the farmer's, like people were knocking on the museum door last Thursday, asking where it was at. And he was like, I just had to turn people away. And so there's a lot of people looking forward to that. So come join, it'll be good.
Okay, Jordan?
Right, uh, this is gonna be a little bit of a complaint session.
Uh-oh.
Wait. Uh, so the, the Wasatch Integrator Waste, uh, Board, uh, met last week and um, several of the cities, um, caved to a city manager in our district, not ours, um, who, um, started calling everyone and I'm very disappointed in, in many of them. Uh, so the result is, uh, where originally we were going to, um, receive a, um, we, we were going to raise the fee later. And instead, and if you implemented a bundled recycling program, you would get, uh, a discount that essentially keep the rate the same. So that would have been the result. It was actually a, a, a great way to incentivize, uh, recycling. Many, uh, so in a, what ended up being a ten to eight vote. So they got just enough to flip the decision. So now, um, all of the fees in the district are going up, um, now. So it'll go from forty-two to forty-six per tonne municipal solid waste. Um, green waste went up by ten dollars and, um, now the only way you can get the full, um, discount for recycling is if you now include green waste in there as well. So the only way for us to get the full discount would be to get um, black cans, blue cans, and green cans at every household. So essentially they, and, and now it's an, that they are advocating, or they, they are allowing, um, it to be more of a, if you want to recycle, go ahead. Um, with, uh, for at least a duration and sometime down the line, they will make it go mandatory. But, uh, the whole, um, recycling project has kind of been, um, diminished and it, it was no longer going to achieve the objectives we are currently going for. So just expressing my, my distaste with the way things went down and the decision that those cities made. And, um, I'm very disappointed in, in how things turned out. So we still have a decision to make. Um, I hope we all make the right decision and go with implement recycling in our community, um, that's more thorough than what some of the other cities are going to do.
Okay.
Over.
Thank you very much. Um, Paul?
Don't have any updates or rants.
Okay, appreciate that. Julie?
The Utah Prevention Coalition Summit is this week. And I'll be attending that and representing our good city and bringing back great ideas hopefully so that we can, um, engage in this prevention, you know, work of, um, preventing mental health problems and drug use in our community.
Okay.
Nothing for me, thanks.
Okay, uh, originally I was attending the CTC conference. I had to drop out because of conflicts with city business. So, um, but I think I'm so glad you're going because we really do need representation down there. And it's a vital part to the future of our community. Other than that, I will end my comments there. Uh, so we now need a motion to adjourn to go to a closed session. We do have some real estate type items which are allowed for, uh, closed session. Can I get a motion to adjourn to closed session?
I moved. Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? We will reconvene in ten minutes, let's say five, in the conference room.